Three different time.
The same computers.
No, no, my watch is here.
Oh, your watch.
Three fifty, six fifty nine, yeah, yeah.
Just turned. Just turned.
You good?
Good.
All right. All the city of Staples City Council in your order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We'll get started right away with the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mary.
Second.
We'll give it to Tom.
Okay, the unknown guy.
Yes, second by Tom. Free discussion. Okay, hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Item three is to approve our consent calendar, which is minutes of the previous meeting, payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Doug. Discussion. Okay, hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. That moves to item four, and that's the presentation of proposals for the purchase of city-owned land at the corner of 12th Street and Highway 10. I guess, I don't know, a wrestling match, arm wrestling, rock, paper, scissors.
I do not wrestle.
I think probably might be the, with the microphone and everything, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Larson. I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations for Ascension Health. I'm based in Brainerd at St. Joe's Medical Center. Like to, I'm pleased to be able to go over our proposal for the property that's in question for tonight. As you go through the slides, I tried to save on paper, so I two-sided it and double back and front. So I'll try to cover some of the slides as we go through this. Ascension Health has had a long history of providing specialty services to the residents of Staples-Motley area and the surrounding service area. And we did intend to continue to provide these services and expand upon those services offered in Staples. Orthopedics, as an example, has been coming to this area for 40 years. It started with Dr. Schmitz back in 1981 and have continued to provide services during the past 40 years. As we look at the page that shows the project data, we, when we presented our initial proposal, we were looking at a range of about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet. Obviously, we need to look at the capabilities of the site and if, we believe that it can accommodate a 15,000-square-foot building. The $7 million price tag, I'll break down for you a little bit later in the presentation. And the number of employees of 15 to 25, we'll break that down in more detail as well. Obviously, the, the range and the price and how much we can build for that price is going to depend on the conditions of where the construction worker availability is and where construction materials are. Right now, it's a pretty tight market, but we're confident that we'd be able to build it on the plan, on the timeline that we had proposed. The, the footprint is pretty small, what we shared here. This is really based on our recently opened Pine River Clinic that we opened last November. And, and a lot of the pictures and images you'll see here are based on that. We would intend to use the same designers and, and really allow us to jumpstart this project. We would have a full range of diagnostic capabilities. We intend to put in a retail pharmacy with a drive-through option as part of this plan. And the next page, I think, just shows some images of what the interiors look like. And again, we'd use the same designer in trying to accomplish a similar look and feel. The next page is our, our offer for the land was $200,000 for the parcel. And I believe we had a purchase agreement that met the requirements at the time the proposal was submitted. The next page has project scope of services. We would anticipate staffing this office to start out with two, two primary care physicians and an advanced practice provider. We would supplement this with specialty outreach that would have a regular daily rotation. In the past, we've had daily orthopedics availability. We would, in, at, over with our relationship with Lakewood, and we intend to continue to have that available at this facility, along with cardiology, oncology, and OB-GYN specialists that would have some regular hours at this facility. The project assumptions, we would, as I mentioned, the number of providers, the mix of support staff would include registration, nursing, ancillary support, pharmacy staff, and specialty support. So as we bring in outreach specialists, we would have to have specialty staff based here at this clinic as well. The breakdown of the, of the project, after we pay for the land, do the site work, and have furniture, furniture fixture and equipment, that would leave us with about a $5.4 million building project, including architectural fees. The economic impact, just last week, Minnesota Hospital Association hosted their kind of fall annual meeting, and one of the speakers at the event was from Merritt Hawkins, who's a national physician recruitment firm, and they shared some statistics that each physician supports a per cap, per capita economic output of about $2.2 million. Jobs on average that each physician supports is about additional 14 jobs. And wage and benefits on average, each physician supports a total of about $1.1 million in wages and benefits. So the economic benefit of having this type of facility or community has, has some far-reaching impacts. The tax revenues, on average, each physician supports $90,000 in local estate tax revenues. And again, that's after you consider the tax of the employees that are brought in, property taxes, other taxes, benefits that you would see. I left some of the sightings from the sources for that material as well. And then last, I just wanted to contrast, compare and contrast some of the economics of the proposals, as I understand them. So as we look at the purchase price, you can see our, our offer versus what was included in Lakewood's offer, the capital investment difference in the jobs and values per FTE. The average wage, we believe, would be significantly higher with the mix of staff that would support our project as compared to Lakewood's. The other, other things that obviously have to be considered when you weigh the economic impacts of the proposals would include, you know, the traffic that would be generated by these proposals to the community, the overall tax base generated, which should be a consideration. And let, you know, and then the last comment I wanted to make is during the Planning Commission, the Zoning Commission meeting last week, we were, we were asked the question, if we're not the successful bidder on this property, would we consider other alternative sites? And I'll just tell you that as we've evaluated other sites within the city of Staples, we don't see another good alternative for us, but so we'd be probably seeking alternative sites outside of the city. I'll stop there and ask questions. See if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Larson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, with that.
So, good evening. For those who may not know me, I'm Tim Rice, President and CEO of Lakewood Health System. We just want to thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal. For the last 40 years, Lakewood has really experienced significant growth. If we look back at what's accrued over the last 40 years, and I really could not have occurred without the support of the city of Staples. Even with the recent addition that we have of our main campus clinic and the internal remodeling that we're doing, due to our growth, we're already, and we're still out of space. So this project that we're proposing really allows us to transition specific services to a more appropriate location, which then opens up more space within our senior campus and also our main campus building, allowing us to add new services that we desire to add in those spaces, while at the same time with our proposal enhancing local economic development, which really both for Lakewood and for the city is important for us to continue to be successful. Lisa Birga, the CFO at Lakewood, she is headed up this team with others that are here, and they've been working on this proposal. So I'm just going to have her now provide just a project summary to you, as well as address the questions I know that came forward. So again, thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal.
All right. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to all of the council for having us here tonight to give us the opportunity to present our proposal, as well as answer your questions. I'm Lisa Birga, CFO with Lakewood Health System. I've been with Lakewood and part of this community for a little over a dozen years. So this, these proposals, or this proposal, it excites me both on a professional and a personal level, because it's always good to see your community growing. As Tim said, we are in a growth mode at Lakewood, which is a good thing, and that growth can't come without the support of a supportive community. The more support we have, the more growth we have. The more growth we have, the more support we have, and it allows us to enhance our service lines, bring additional service lines to town, and that allows everyone here to keep their health care close to home where it's convenient, as well as we receive better outcomes. What I find exciting and unique about our proposal is that it not only addresses the needs of Lakewood's growth issues, but it also provides an opportunity for growth for the city of Staples. Most importantly, our, our plan and our proposal aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. For those of you that are familiar with Lakewood, you know we have a very strong history of not only investing in Lakewood, but also investing in our communities with which we serve. I think right now, the Magic Forest Daycare is, is a very good example of that partnership. I just drove by there on my way here to check in on that, and I'm excited to say that in a few weeks, we'll have double the daycare options available in Staples as a result of Lakewood's partnership and contribution. Obviously, health or daycare is not in healthcare's industry, but it's just an example of the partnerships that Lakewood does make. We approached this project no different. We identified a need that we had internally for space, but that was just one piece of it. We wanted to back up and look at the project on a broader lens and see if there were identified needs within the community that this project could also serve to meet. So when we came to the table to come up with a plan, we, we pulled up the city's comprehensive plan, and we looked at it, and basically said we had some core objectives we wanted to meet with our proposal. Number one, we obviously wanted to make sure we had space for our growth that we had identified, so that was, that was the key priority. Number two, we wanted to make sure that this proposal brought economic growth to the city of Staples and the surrounding community. Third, we wanted to make sure that it offered additional employment opportunities of all various scales, starting at support staff all the way to the professional end of economic or employment opportunities. Additionally, we wanted to make sure that this allowed us to unlock capital or real estate opportunities for entrepreneurs within the community, serving kind of as a catalyst to future entrepreneurs or investors who maybe don't have the money for a capital outlay to go into an entirely risky startup, but allowing for space for those, those entrepreneurs to move forward. Additionally, what we see near and dear, as the largest employer within the city of Staples, we feel the pain of the housing gaps near and dear to our employment. And so making sure we're, again, we're part of that solution. Could this proposal address a piece of those housing gaps and, and help with that need as well? And then finally, the entire structure of our plan was built upon, like I said, the comprehensive plan for the city. So you have the details of the plan within your packet. I won't, I won't read that to you page by page, thankfully, because I know it's kind of lengthy, but overall summary of the plan, approximately 15,000 square feet. Our total investment, capital investment will be between three to six, four to five, 4.5 million. Again, that's a very rough estimate, and we erred on the side of conservative because we didn't want to overcommit to the overall value of the, of the building. In total, we estimate that this project will bring in 15 to 28 new employment opportunities to the city of Staples. Again, we are staying on the conservative side of that just because of the nature of the unknown tenants that will become leasing the space within our building, that could range on the higher end as well. There'd be two anchor tenants within our facility. One will be due to our recent partnership with Twin Cities Orthopedics, TCO. We are looking at expanding our physical therapy offerings. Right now, at Staples, and the therapy that most people are very familiar with is more focused around total joints, total, total hips and knees. What we're looking at is expanding that more to an athletic basis, an athletic theme. So looking at sports performance, sports acceleration, kind of what TCO is known for, and bringing in a space of about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, two stories high, open windows, to allow for that space. This would not only provide programming for our community, but also act as a regional draw to athletes within a identified radius. The second anchor tenant would be our community health programming. We have a very robust food and security program at Lakewood where we are working to meet the, the nutrition needs of our community. Right now, those meals are picked up at our senior campus. We'd be looking to move those services to this facility on Highway 10, better access, have a drive-up availability, making it easier and more convenient for those patients and residents. Also including in that would be some office spaces for some community health workers, helping to support the needs of the community, and then additionally, health and nutrition learning labs. So backing things up and working with people around, how do they, how do they cook better? How do they cook more healthy? And, and identify those needs upfront. The additional 4,000 to 5,000 square feet would be where the retail components come in. Some of these could be healthcare in nature, but that would not be a requirement of this space. Our, our thought is, once these spaces are available, the 4,000 to 5,000 square feet could become an availability of a, of an interested entrepreneur that's looking to bring something new to the city of Staples. There are identified things that we've already talked to, talked about. We've reached out to Longbelle Pharmacy, asking if they would potentially be interested in doing a satellite drive-up pharmacy. We've talked to the coffee shop, asking if they would be interested in doing a second location as well, which there is interest. So that's a potential to expand that with a drive-up service as well. On the healthcare front, those spaces could also be filled with, if we weren't able to secure tenants, more of the retail healthcare, healthcare service lines, like durable medical equipment, as well as our sleep study services. Phase two of the project would be the upper level of about 10,000 square feet, because the space above the sports medicine component would be two levels and not have that available. So about 10,000 square feet of phase two would begin after the completion of phase one, obviously, and once we've identified tenants. And what we would like to include in that space is ideally eight to 10 residential apartments, and that those would be furnished or finished out as those tenants are identified. It could be a blend of professional office suites, as well as residential units, depending on what the need is as this, as these are built. So again, the details are in the packet, but you will see that within all the details, our project does align with the comprehensive plan of the city. I will share on behalf of Lakewood and our board that Lakewood is very committed to this project, and I hope you can agree, very committed to this community. And so very excited to move this forward and spur some development and continue in the spirit of growth within the city of Staples. So with that, I will open it up to questions for me. We also have Brad Anderson, who is our VP of Strategy and Development, Alicia Baumann, who is our Director of Community Health, with to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Lisa or the staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
Well, thank you both. I think the plan here was to get through our full agenda, and then, if you notice, the last thing on our agenda then is to go back and do closed session to discuss this further. So I'm not sure, I mean, it's as far as hanging around, if you want to, and listen to city budget talks, but you're certainly welcome, and, but otherwise, we'll, like I said, be going into closed session at, at the end of the council meeting. So with that, I'm going to move on then to our next item, and thanks again, guys. And that is item number five, and that's to consider approving Resolution 1853, and that's adopting our preliminary tax levy. I'll kind of turn it over to Gerald.
So included in your packet is the proposed preliminary 2022 city budget, you know, along with the resolution that breaks out the, you know, the tax levy and where that's allocated. But, you know, starting on page one of the proposed budget, you will see 2.91% as the proposed preliminary levy increase. That is the same as our meeting earlier in September. So, you know, we've, you know, gone through and looked at it, and, you know, basically we're, we're coming back to the council with the identical thing that we had back on September 8th or 9th, I don't remember the, the exact date of that. The next page is, is a page that was not in our budget workshop information, but I think the, you know, the question was asked, you know, what's the impact, the property tax impact to, to property owners and, and what's the impact to our tax rate? So you can see, you know, that levy comparison from '21 to '22 up on the top, proposed 2022 would be $30,818 more. Tax capacity numbers, see, tax capacity is up. We also have some TIF, captured tax capacity that gets subtracted off that for the time being. And then what the tax rate would be with the 2.9%. So it'd go from 72.929 up to 74.254, or 1.8% rounded. You know, estimated market value, $140,000 house, you know, what's the impact on that? About 15 bucks a year, you know, based on the 2.9%. The, we did find out late this afternoon, our health insurance numbers were at nine. We have 10 in here, you know, so there may be an opportunity as, as we approach final budget and levy, you know, barring other things that, you know, pop up in the meantime to, you know, make that adjustment. But I think, you know, the 2.91% is a preliminary budget number is, is very reasonable. As you all know, it can go down between now and December 14th, it cannot go up. So that would be a ceiling-type number. And I don't know if anybody has, you know, specific questions about, you know, the, the rest of the budget. Like I said, it's the same as, as what we spent two hours going through three weeks ago.
Any questions?
Who in the budget?
Okay, we have two. So you're approving, okay, the first thing is to approve, approve the preliminary property tax levy, and then we have the budget.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted.
The property tax levy? Okay. I have a motion by Roy. Is there a?
Second.
Second. By John. Any discussion? I just want to throw out today, I was kind of doing, and I know Gerald and I talked to him, he did some too, a little Googling, because we're kind of late in the game, so it's kind of nice when we do it towards the end of September, because you can see what a lot of other communities are doing, and I, not that it matters, but I, I think, I can only find two cities that were less than on a preliminary than us. And I probably looked at 40 different cities, so I think it's, you know, even though it doesn't, I know it doesn't, but, you know, I, we've been keeping things, and I, I always like to look at that tax rate number more than anything, and the fact that it's going up 1.8, I, you know, I'd rather see that stay even or down, but we still hopefully have some room in here to bring that down and maybe get that tax rate to keep that more, more level. So, anyway, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. So with that, that moves us to item number six, where we can consider, consider our proposed 2022 preliminary city budget and set the truth in taxation hearing day for December 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Discussion. Okay, hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Thanks again, everybody putting all that work into that. And we'll move on to item number seven, and those are committee reports. We have planning and zoning.
I'm digging. Planning and zoning commission met last week on the 21st of September. You'll note that's a little bit different meeting date than we had been doing, trying to find something that works for all the members, so we're on a, on a third Tuesday right now, and I think that probably will work out pretty well. Conversation, I think, for the final time on the proposed chicken ordinance. The council will see that ordinance shortly, but we think we have something that will work well. We did review the two proposals that you heard presentations on tonight. Planning and zoning commission was basically charged with looking at the proposals and determining whether or not they do align with the city of Staples comprehensive plan. So basically went through those, and ultimately, the conclusion was that, yes, both of the proposals do align with the comprehensive plan, and that is the, you know, basically the report back to the city council. There was, there was some discussion, you know, I will say, about whether or not that's the highest and best use of that Highway 10 property, but ultimately, you know, the commission did determine that, that it does align, and that we should move forward with the council determination. That was pretty much it. We had a couple of, we did have one resignation from P&amp;Z, so we'll be doing some advertising to see if we have people that are interested in serving in that capacity, and had some discussion on mobile manufactured modular homes. So that was, that was it, meeting ended just before 6 o'clock, so an hour long.
Any questions for Gerald or Doug? Okay, thank you. We'll move to park and rec. Bush is here, and it looks like you got a few bullets for us.
Hello. We didn't have a meeting, so there are no minutes. I was put on quarantine for a meeting, so gotta love COVID, and trying to pull everyone together after that gets to be a little difficult. There are a couple of items. We have two use agreements for the community center. Instead of doing just a regular room rental, we wanted to kind of get a signed agreement so that we got paid even if something happened, just formalizes things a little bit more. So there's one for square dancing, which is a fun group. They've been there now a couple of times, and that seems to be growing. I have another group that has expressed some interest doing May to November, so that's fun. And then the youth dance, Kendra's little kids' dance class on Mondays. So there's the two site agreements, and then the 2022 seasonal lease agreement, just because the end of the year is here, everyone's preparing for next year, putting in deposits and stuff. And then we have a couple of sites that have been open, and we've actually filled this summer for next summer, so I just want to get that lease agreement done so that we can get everything signed and ready to go.
Okay, I guess, so you're, you, you're looking for motions on each one of these?
Yep. So the square dancing is $65 a month, and that goes from September through May on the lease agreement.
Want to make that motion?
Is that, can, they should, they be bunched, or are you wanting, you want, you making it for the Winona?
Are, is, are they going to be the same price?
No, so square dancing is $65 a month?
It's room separately.
Yeah.
Room separately.
Yep. So that's a motion for the Winona, Winona ways?
Yes.
Okay, you got a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Okay, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second one is for youth dance, and that's a hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Make a motion to approve that for Kendra's dance class.
Okay, motion by John. Second by Roy. Discussion? Okay, not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the 2022 seasonal site agreement, the prices and everything have changed, just some verbiage so that we can deal with nuisances a little bit faster.
I'll make a motion to approve the seasonal site agreements for 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tom. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the last one is our...
Fee schedule?
Fee schedule?
Well, it has new things on it, so with everything new, I just waited until it went through board. So through, with the fee schedule, I've had a couple of seasonal residents want to rent rustic sites for the season, so there's going to be a couple of new fees come up on the fee schedule.
You can wait with that?
Yeah, we'll wait, yeah, because I want, it's just, it's a whole year rental, and we've never done that before, so I want to make for sure everyone's comfortable with.
So the seasonal sites are, why do you rent rustic sites?
For the season.
For the season.
Yep, so their family can come in.
They want to rent like a site across from where they're at?
Yeah, so when you go, when you're out there and you go left to the seasonals and you go right to the regular campground, there's rustic sites right there, and they kind of, they align perfectly with where they're at. So that's where their family stays, and they just want to make for sure that they're available when they're there.
That's new, isn't it? Have we got any, do any other places do anything like that, or, you know, or...
Most places are all transient or all seasonal. To have the combinations is kind of rare. But, yeah, they even have electrical that you can rent for the season, so.
How many sites are we talking about potentially, rustic ones?
Two for them. And then, I don't foresee too many others going that way. We may have a little bit of interest on the electrical side of things, but when it comes to electric, the cost and stuff, it's not metered separately within the campground, so that one's going to be a little bit more difficult.
Is that going to create some potential for like large gatherings that would maybe potential for noise and other things that would be... I mean, I guess, you know, the larger the space, the larger the gathering, you know? I guess, the reason, I guess, we got seasonal probably is to, you know, you give them a limited amount of space, and it's...
So they rent, the couple that wants to rent the rustic for the season, they already have two seasonal sites. So they rent two of our seasonal sites, and then they just wanted the rustic. So, and they have people that come in and out. They're not rowdy at all.
They rent two seasonal spaces?
Yep.
So they pay for...
Spots. That actually makes good sense to me. If I wanted, if I had a seasonal and I had people wanting to come, I'd want to have a spot right next to me.
Yep, they just want them close, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Otherwise, we're just working on our projects, wrapping up the season, so we'll be closing down parks here in the next couple of weeks, so it's been a good summer.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to have staff wages conversations, yep, just because we didn't have any park staff this year. And then with the community center, we have to be competitive in order to retain employees for a long period of time, so. It's just time to update them.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Now move us to open forum. I'm just, they're all sitting there quiet, giving you an opportunity to say something. Anybody? What's that? Any open forum? All right, we'll move on to city administrative report.
Just a few items, if you are planning to fly in or out of the airport for the next two days, you may be out of luck, the crack seal project starts tomorrow morning at seven. We notified the, all the hangar tenants that have airplanes, and they have either got out or got planes in, in some cases, ahead of this. LS negotiations for the 2022-23 labor agreement, we did meet again last week. I think that will work out pretty good in the end. Bachelor Block Opera House Capital Investment Committee toured last Thursday at, I guess, about 11 o'clock. Always, always fun watching people's faces when they come into the opera hall the first, you know, the very first time, because that's something that's just not expected when people come through the door. But congratulate that group. People put a lot of work into organizing that, and it went very well. I thank Dawn and Gary Timms for performing once again. Dawn fills the room when she sings, so. And then just to update on Cardinal Pine's expansion project, they are anticipating breaking ground by the middle of October, so, you know, two and a half weeks or so. Should see equipment and materials arriving on site up there for their 30 apartment unit expansion.
Across from where the existing one, or is it the back one?
Yeah, it'll basically form an L, yeah, north and south. So that's all I have tonight. Unless there's questions.
Okay, any questions for Gerald?
House of water treatment plant coming.
The treatment, the treatment plant?
Oh, plugging along. You know, I think the, we've got a meeting again tomorrow, but, you know, two weeks ago, they kind of gave us an update, and they are going to provide us with the firm, what they anticipate a firm completion date now, because they actually have the stuff in, those materials in, so. Well, you know, probably at our next public works meeting, we should have a firm, you know, firm date. So we are withholding some payment dollars, you know, going forward, and they would be covering any costs in the meantime of our existing plant, that are maintenance-type items, so.
So still completion the end of November?
Yeah, it will be in November, I'm sure, yeah. And that, part of that is the automatic systems and the other contractors on training, putting everything in place as far as that availability date. You know, all of the fittings and stuff that they were waiting for to do all the backfilling and grade the roads and all that stuff are now in the ground, so. We're meeting on site tomorrow and walk through everything again.
Any other questions? All right, that'll move us to item 10, and that would be to close the meeting to consider proposals for the purchase of the city-owned land at the corner of 12th Street and Highway 10. The motion by Ron, second by Roy, to close the meeting. Did we want to leave again?
Yeah, I think we might as well go in the council chambers again.
We can't be with you, so.
I'm going to end our...
Get some popcorn for the crew here.